Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to this meeting. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. What's that? "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. To my far left is Administrator Hitt, then Commissioner Huxley, Commissioner Boyce, and John Jesuit. So Administrator Hitt, you're going to be running this show today, I hear?
I do.
Okay.
I will.
Okay.
Can we have a possible agenda additions, Madam Chair?
I looked at the memo of understanding and it looks like it needs some sort of a vote or something.
It just needs a signature.
But we can't take any action in this meeting, I know. So these signatures, I was looking at the dates on all these signatures, they're all over the place.
Yeah, there's only about a third that have been collected, but we could save a week. It's not mandatory to be done today, but it would be helpful.
Okay, I think we probably ought to put it to the next meeting where we can actually make a decision.
Just for future reference, we can't ever amend a workshop and have a decision made. I know there's been discussion. Okay, thank you.
Katie, you're on, Administrator Hitt.
Where's Huddle? Is Huddle here? Huddle gonna be here?
I guess so. Jake's here. That's my dog. Just jumped on your lap.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, members of the public that are here as well, and other Curry County staff members. Appreciate this opportunity to present to you some, just some basic information, background, some history, some comparisons of our budget with our own past, along with other comparable counties. I want you to feel free to ask questions at any time during the presentation. If you prefer to wait and hold your questions to the end, of course, that's certainly fine by me.
I'm just going to ask one question. You talked about comparable counties. Are we talking population?
Yes, and I'll expand on that.
Okay.
A little bit more when I get to that point in the presentation.
Okay.
I don't have any recommendations for you today. My presentation is really mostly in the form of, if you will, food for thought or possible action in the future. Some of it would probably even be quite long-term action, rather than just in the course of the next few months or even in the remainder of the fiscal year. In all cases, numbers are rounded, so I didn't, it wasn't my attempt or my desire to indicate exact numbers, just rounding off like $8,357,271. I typically round it up to 3 million, 8 million, whatever I said, $357,000. So it's not an attempt to worry about exact number crunching.
So it looks like to the nearest 10,000, right?
Yeah, for the most part, yes. The nearest 1,000, that's correct.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask Mr. Jesuit to help me here. So are we ready for our first slide? And I should say while he's doing that, I'm not sure exactly how long this presentation will take. I'm committed, obviously, to not, at least for my part, not to go past noon, but we could end up, depending on your questions and so on, and to your own desire, to perhaps go a little bit past noon. That'll be up, of course, to the Commission to be your choice. I should have unlocked it, I apologize, Charles. So what you have here, one of the things I think is often useful, oh, is that my finger? No, that's his finger. Now, let's see if we can get that a little bit bigger. I think we can. Yeah, full screen mode there. One of the things I think is often useful is to kind of look at where we've been with our budget. I should add as well that my main focus throughout this presentation is on the general fund. It's not on total county resources, partly because total county resources can vary so much depending on if there are large grants or many of the counties I do comparable with, they maybe have forest timber receipts from county ownlands or perhaps federal ownlands where they happen to get a year or two with exceptionally large receipts. That, in addition to the fact that usually or almost always, in my experience, the general fund, that's the main problem, main issue to balance. So you can see here just the range of general fund resources from fiscal year 2010, '11, 2010, '11, to the current fiscal year that we're in.
Commissioner Huxley?
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Huxley.
Do those, early on in like 2010 and '11, I'm pretty sure that we still had Curry Community Health and Home Health and Hospice Departments in here. Not that they were all a general fund, but I think there was significant, I'm assuming that's included in there, and now you don't have those departments.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Pardon me? Okay, I don't know.
Go ahead to the next one, John, and I'll address your comments there.
I have one other question before we move on. On all of those numbers, are any of the SRS, I think that's what they call timber funds, are they included in there?
Yes, yes. It's everything.
Because they said we were going to go back to 2015?
Right, so one of the things, my numbers, well, that would primarily reflect on the last page in your copy there, and you received in your budget pack at the proposed general fund for next fiscal year. This does not include any anticipated SRS receipts.
Okay.
So we didn't attempt to quantify that. We will, of course. We did not attempt, at this point, attempt to quantify that.
And one last question, that last one, $7,870,000, was that lower simply because we did not use road funds or because the SRS fund were not included?
You're talking next year. Yeah, next year is unbalanced. I think she's asking about the current year?
Yeah, or 17, 18.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's because the, in 2014, '15, the SRS money was in there, and the 15, '16 budget included the transfer from road funds.
Got to go back, John. I think you somehow jumped ahead there. Right away, he's ahead, as a matter of fact.
Right.
I didn't know you such a hurry, John.
It's the mouse again.
Oh, you went away.
You're going backwards.
Is it lunchtime?
Yeah. I'm hungry.
All right, there we go.
Okay, so the 16, 17, are the 16, 17 the same dollar as 15, 16?
Well, that might have been an error.
I think that might be an error. Because I think 16, 17 is lower.
Oh, yeah, so that, we corrected that, and I apologize, the correction didn't get in there.
So what should it be? Yeah, I thought that was weird that it was the same.
I did not bring my budget.
Okay, I meant to grab it and I didn't, so.
Anyway, I believe 16, 17 is lower. And that was because we did not use road funds and just used a little carryover balance. But I'll go get the budget.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, John. So with that caveat in mind about 15, 16, 16, 17, here is, and again, I think both Commissioner Huxley and you, Chairwoman Gold, make good points. I mean, inevitably, every year, there's a lot of fluctuations in the general fund because there are various funding grants or federal tax timber dollars, or whatever it may be, that can vary substantially from year to year. So it's really difficult to say if you compare general fund from one year to next, that you're necessarily really comparing apples to apples. Yes, Commissioner.
Yes, Commissioner Huxley.
I agree, and without footnotes or something, it can be very deceiving, very deceiving.
Right, and I didn't attempt to bore into or drill down, if you will, to that level of detail. I can certainly follow up and do that. I mean, that's, it's just a matter of time commitment on my part. And I might say now that that same statement would be true in looking at other counties and their budgets and their general funds. Again, I didn't bore down, and you'll see in a minute, Tillamook County has this huge general fund. I really didn't bore into find, to determine why their general fund was so large.
Commissioner Huxley?
Yes, sir.
Again, on that same point, too, is that, of course, we've not seen this document until five minutes ago, so.
Well, no, it was there earlier. It was there Friday.
Pardon me?
I'm pretty sure it was there Friday.
It, it, it.
I was told it wasn't even finished until this morning, when I asked.
Yeah.
So we have not, so I'm saying is we didn't have time to review and ask questions like are coming up.
Right, I understand. And that's why, at this point, it's, you know, to me, it's just a, okay, here's some various things we can take a look at, and then if it's an desire to follow up in more detail on any portion of it or on all of it, you know, I'm happy to do that. Regrettably, I did not have time, my Friday, to finish this graphic report.
It was up there on Monday, I remember reading it. It's, I wasn't here.
That's good, I'm glad to hear that. All right, so just a bar graph of what we just talked about. Go ahead, John. So here's some basic, excuse me. I should add, and seek your permission to Madam Chair, that when I talk very long, I usually get a frog in my throat or some other kind of speech impairment, so if you are patient with me, I would appreciate that. So what you see here are some basic comparisons with some comparable counties. How did I pick these out? Well, I picked these out with a variety of tests. I looked at population, I looked at geographic area, I looked at tax rate, and I'll talk about that more in just a second, in order to get some counties that I felt were as good a comps, and again, as Mike McArthur, McArthur said when he was here last, our last meeting, the executive officer of the Association of Oregon Counties, when you've seen one Oregon county, you've seen one Oregon county. So again, with a caveat in mind that all of these are different, but I attempted to get as good comps as I reasonably could. Please note, when you look at the tax rates there, Jefferson is an outlier at $3.57, as is Cook County at $3.87, but I will say that they otherwise compare quite well with us. I would like to make just a general budgetary comparison note as well, that if you go onto the websites, two counties are, I would especially like to call out, for one for commendation and the other for condemnation, and the one that I would like to call out for commendation is Cook County. I think if you go on and look at their budget, particularly their budget summary document, it's a beautiful document, easy to read, easy to understand, comprehensive and yet succinct at the same time, at least as far as the bigger budget questions and issues. So I would recommend that to our staff to take a look at and see if we can emulate something similar, if not this fiscal year, at least in the future. The opposite end of the spectrum was Hood River County, whose budget was extremely difficult to wade through, decipher, pick out relevant information. So in addition to the property taxes, tax rate property taxes, and you'll note there the property tax range there, from Curry County of roughly $1.7 million to, where is it there? Jefferson County at over $7.8 million. In addition to that, I put in the major departments or funds or sections of the general fund that I want to talk about today, that is the sheriff, the assessor, the clerk, and the district attorney. I'm not trying to just pick on those four or say that they're, that other departments aren't equally important. The reason I picked those four departments was, obviously, particularly the sheriff is the largest user of the general fund, and the other three are, it was easier to do comparables with other counties. Assessment is pretty much done, the assessment operations are done very similarly around the state. Likewise, the DA functions, and to a lesser degree, perhaps, but still mostly true with the clerk. Go ahead, John. So here's a bar chart. You can see in the green, or I don't know what shade of green you exactly call that, but at any rate, that's the general fund collections, revenues from these various counties. You'll see that the two lowest are Hood River and our county, Curry County, the highest obviously is Tillamook. Again, why Tillamook is so much higher than the others, I'm not sure. I didn't take the time to drill down to look at that, other than I did notice that they had an exceptionally large reserve fund carried forward. In addition to that, you'll note the sheriff, second portion of the general fund is down there as well in kind of a purple color. And in every county's case, not surprisingly, the sheriff is the largest user of the general fund, ranging from Jefferson at the highest to Hood River Union in our county as some of the lowest. And you can see the range there. Go ahead, John. So I also took a look at salaries. So how about salary comparisons for this purpose? I added in Coos and Josephine Counties because they are definitely competitors with us, and far worse so than probably the other ones are as far as hiring. I didn't include Josephine or Coos County and the other comparables because they're simply so much bigger. But you'll note there the various ranges, deputy DA, for example, ranges, and sheriff deputy ranges, along with the average, and that's just, not the average of the actual people on payroll, but just a mathematical average of the minimum salary and the maximum salary. On the far right there, you'll see the average amount for deputy DA, the average of our comparable counties and including our two neighbors is 5569, and for the sheriff, deputy average, 4,269. You'll see, now that's not founding Curry County average, that, or Curry County added in there, that's the average of everybody else. So our deputy DA average is 4650, again, compared to the 5569 amount, so big gap there. Small gap compared to the average with our comparables, for the sheriff, 4179 versus 4269. Here it is, graphed out for the deputy DA. Curry, obviously, on the left, the average amount on the right. You see the range there from Hood River being the highest, highest compensation for deputy DAs, and Curry County being the lowest. Here's the sheriff deputy average on the same type of graph. Curry, you see there, Curry, Coos, Jefferson, and Tillamook are all pretty close there. Looks like Tillamook is slightly the lowest, and Cook County definitely the highest. With the average amount on the far right.
Commissioner Boyce?
Just one, just want to go back for a second. By the way, all those counties are really close to our population, as you mentioned. That was, I mean, a couple of them within 100. Anyway, you said Tillamook County had quite a reserve. Do you know, remember how much, and is that, that's not a road fund reserve.
No, that wasn't a road fund, that was a general fund reserve. You know, if I remember correctly, and I was scanning through their numbers, something like six or seven million. I could be wrong on that, but I could certainly get back with you and confirm that number.
That's fine, thanks.
Go ahead, John. So here's the assessor department through history. Assessor from 2011 at $640,000 total department budget, and 2018, $692,000, so a seven-year range there. I also looked at each department, of these four key departments, also looked at how much general fund support they used in those respective years. And you'll see there, the assessor's case, it ranged from 2011, $460,000, to this year, $507,000. Here's the graph of that, the blue being the total department budget over those from 2011 to 2018, red being the amount of general fund support. As you can see, in the assessor's case, the general fund support hasn't changed a whole lot over that period of time. You know, a little bit of bounce up there in 2013, a little bounce down in 2014, but otherwise relatively flat general fund support for the assessor function. Of course, that includes the tax assessment portion of that as well. Go ahead. Here's our district attorney, again, same period of time, started out at $312,000, is now at $382,000 total budget. General fund support went from $242,000 to $352,000. So go ahead, check the graph on that one. Same type of graph, blue being the total budget per year.
So I just have one question there. I'm going back to the last one. It looks like in 2015, there was a significant, significantly lower amount there. Do you know why, or?
Yeah, Everett's here, Everett's not here. I don't know if, if, John.
Okay. So they had a grant to kind of cover the difference? Okay, Commissioner Huxley?
When you speak, you have to come up or we're not going to hear anything on the video.
Yeah, we always have to keep in mind, we have to be at the mics.
I believe in the district attorney's case, I believe that, at the time, I'm trying to remove them, but at the time, I think there were some grants that made their budget go up and down a little bit over the years. So I'm trying to get all the grants actually into a grant fund so that they don't affect their regular budget so much.
So let me just ask one little question here. We're talking total budget, and then we're talking general fund support, and even the general fund support was significantly lower, but their total budget was also significantly lower, so.
Yeah, we have to, I'd have to drill down on that year.
I would have to. It's not the end of the world, but.
Right, yeah, you know, it's possibility that maybe the, if they did get a grant.
Is this the district attorney one we're talking about?
Yeah, district attorney.
But wouldn't that grant be part of their total budget?
Well, you would think normally it would be, but.
I just don't, I'm not seeing it on this.
She's looking at the difference between 2014 and 2015.
You just look at 2015, and it's significantly lower than all of the others.
Yeah, significantly lower.
And, you know, I actually would have to go look at his actuals, is this actuals or budget budget? You're using budget numbers or actual numbers?
Actual, for that year, actual.
Yeah, I'd have to, I would have to go look at that. I just don't know, off the top of my head.
I just noticed that when I was looking through the numbers.
It's kind of hard when you're, I wasn't here in 2015 or probably would remember why it happened.
Well, I got you, neither was I.
Yeah, yeah.
It just kind of jumped out at me.
Yeah, we'll, I'll ask John Jesuit to take a note of all these questions, and I'll definitely get back, if not at a meeting, certainly in person or via email directly to you. Go ahead, John. So that's the district attorney. Here's the sheriff, over the same period of time.
Sorry.
Okay. Started out in 2011 at $2,930,000, 2018, current year, $3,870. General fund support, though, changed substantially from 2.3 million or 2.3 and a half million to current year, $3.4 million. So go ahead and switch that one, John. So there's the bar graph, and you see it probably pretty well on the bar graph, the red being the total general fund support. Again, a fair bit of fluctuation there, probably because of grants or other activity going on.
So could that have been due to the, we didn't use any road funds that year?
Road funds could very well be part of this, yeah. That I'm not sure of.
Because there was a significant amount that was not road funds.
You'll notice this year, 2018, the sheriff's budget is very heavily, you know, a very high percentage of the sheriff's total budget is dependent on the general fund.
Yeah, but 2017, notice the general fund's significantly lower.
Yes, yes.
And I think that's due to the road funds.
Road funds, okay, thank you for that. Have to turn on your thing. Well, I don't know, maybe that's not going to work. Yeah, well, it was pretty, we couldn't really do that. Go ahead, John.
As long as it's on pitchwork, okay.
Here's a summary of all that, sheriff from 2011, 2018, sheriff general fund support, same thing with the assessor, district attorney, here I added in the clerk, and overall. So you'll notice here, the key, in my view, takeaway on this slide, is the right-hand side where you got the total change and the percent change. So sheriff up $940,000, 32%, but his general fund support up 44.7, at least, compared to this year. Now, obviously, again, certain apples to oranges comparison, depending on which year you pick, but I thought it was fair and reasonable to compare it to this year. Assessor, a little, quite a different story. He's up only 8.1% and his general fund support up only 8.7. So he's not, hasn't really outpaced in any way, or increased in any way as a percent his general fund support. So very good, Mr. Assessor, that's excellent. District attorney, I can't give him quite as high a grade, being facetious, joking. He's up a total of $70,000 in his budget or 22.4%, but his general fund support up 110 or 45.5 support. Clerk, wow, look at that, 212, 212, no change in the general fund support, total budget up only nine and a half. There's the overall total of those four funds, up one, almost $1.1 million on the bottom right of your screen there, or on your paper, for a total of 26%. But general fund support for those funds taken together is up 43%. And just for point of comparison, Consumer Price Index during.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing to put in there.
Yeah, 17.8 for that same period of time. Go ahead to the bar chart, the next one, John. So the bar chart there is again key, I think, one of the key things we see going on here, long-term trend, is more and more reliance on the general fund, on average. You get a lot of fluctuation from year to year, depending on grants, use of road funds, et cetera, but the overall trend, particularly in the last couple of years, or last year especially, this year, is to rely on more general fund support.
And is that direct correlation to how much revenues we can get outside, for those departments outside of, those departments don't have a lot of revenue sources, so their general fund support continues to go up?
So maybe we need to set up corners on the street, corners with pencils, or?
It's just the general fund supporting is, because those are departments in particular do not have resources against their expenditures. They don't have their own fees and collections of other departments.
You can always change that.
Yeah. Go ahead, John. So one of the things, and I'm just going to kind of skim over this, excuse me, is, and I'll talk about it a little bit more in my conclusion, but service level measures, for one, for example, is what's called the index crime rate, index crimes, index crime rates. I don't have good numbers really because of not full reporting of after 2012, or excuse me, after 2013, but you'll kind of see there the total index crimes from the various counties, how it changed from 2008 through 2012. And again, that's just an example of a way to measure how well are we doing? We can take a look at the index crime rate and say, is it going up? Is it going down? How does it compare with other counties? How does it compare with the state as a whole?
So how do they figure that?
Well, I'll get to that in just a sec, okay. So here it is, bar chart by year and county. You'll see Josephine County substantially higher over, over the entire measured period, but especially in 2008, excuse me, 2012, a higher crime index, and then. but especially in 2008, excuse me, 2012, a higher crime index are, and then Coos County behind it. You see the other counties that are more our size with the semi-exception of Union and maybe Tillamook are all pretty close to the same there as index crime rate. Let me define that just for a minute in accordance with your question there, Madam Chair. Index crime rate is, index crimes were established by the FBI a good many years ago, and I didn't bring a list of it, but includes things like rape, murder, burglary, felonious assault. There's, and maybe the sheriff knows it off the top of his head, but anyway, there's six of what are called serious or substantial crimes. Doesn't include things like drug possession or drug trafficking. It doesn't include, you know, fraud or what's typically considered white collar crime or that type of thing. But it is a common comparison that's used to see kind of, if you will, a performance measure, how are we doing? Now, in my own personal experience, we took, I had two history points. When I started out in government back in the early eighties, we took a look at, this is Dordie, California, city, interestingly enough, population wise, about the same size as Curry County is now, about twenty-five thousand. And we took a look at our index crime rate. Of course, there in LA County, you've got lots of comparable cities right nearby, and our index crime rate compared to our comparables didn't look very good. So we were what's called a contract city. LA County Sheriff, we didn't have our own police department. LA County Sheriff provided all of our police, public safety functions for the city. So what we did, fortunately, we had the money to do this, what we did is significantly enhance or increase the police presence, hired, got the sheriff to assign a full-time detective for the city alone, more patrols for the city alone, and a variety of other support functions so that we were able to see that index crime rate over the course of the next three, four years drop substantially. We did something similar when I, when I came to Lebanon in the year 2000. We had an index crime rate at that time in excess of most other cities, I would say almost all other cities with the exception of Portland and Salem, I think, as I recall, in the Willamette Valley. So we did something similar, significantly increased our police presence, patrols, et cetera, ended up building a jail, municipal jail, obviously very small, but still an important step for holding prisoners for, for extended period of time until they came to trial. Madam Chair.
Okay, when I'm looking at this, these numbers, is this raw data rather than a rate? Usually when I think of a rate, I think of a percent.
Well, it's called the crime index. So what they do is they take, they take the total number of index crimes, okay, that are committed over the course of a year, they usually use a calendar year, and then they divide that by the population and they multiply it times, I forget now whether it's a hundred or a thousand. So it's basically amount of crimes per capita, basically, of the, of the index type crimes, it's amount of, amount of those crimes per capita.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Are two of those, are two of those our immediate neighbors?
Yes, two of those are immediate neighbors, yes. Go ahead, John. Here's another way, you see the index crime rate there also numerically drawn out. I didn't put Josephine on there, but I just did a few of the counties. As of 2013, which is the last time I have, believe it or not, full statistics from all reporting agencies in Curry County, we don't quite have a full 2014, 15, 16, we don't at all, and I'm not sure about 17, but the 17 report isn't out yet. But any rate, and then you, what, then you can compare that also with arrest efficiency. So.
So what does that mean?
Well, what that means is the total number of, total number of index crimes. So let's say you have 500 index crimes over the course of a year, and if you make 50 arrests, your arrest efficiency is 10%. You only found potential bad guys to, for a one-tenth, 10% of the crimes, index crimes that were committed over the course of the year. So you see at least the most recent year I have this, Curry County Sheriff, very efficient, thirty-seven point five, closely followed by Jefferson County with Coos kind of the lowest there. So, and also, which kind of goes with a higher index crime rate. Obviously, the more crimes you're having to deal with, it becomes harder and harder to, you know, kind of chase all those crimes and perpetrators, perpetrators of those crimes down. So it's kind of not surprising that their arrest efficiency is lower, but nevertheless, I think that's a valid comparable performance, a level, performance, service level standard that could be tracked and perhaps given some significance. Go ahead, John. So conclusion, matters to consider. One of the things, of course, is funding the sheriff to the extent that he can provide a 24/7 patrol. And I'm not sure, Sheriff, do you know when the last time you had 24/7?
It's been probably fifteen years.
Oh, fifteen years, okay. So, so that's, that's, that's one of the standards that are typically used, a goal, if you want to say it, for most law enforcement agencies to have enough staff, certified staff, deputies or officers on the, on the department payroll, if you will, in order to have 24/7 coverage. That is at least one officer on duty 24/7. And I think that's an important standard to try and reach. Obviously, we haven't reached it in 15 years. And I wish I had a little more recent numbers as far as crime rate, how the crime rate's been impacted by that, other than 2013, at least, as you saw, at least up through 2013, we weren't doing too badly despite having less than a 24/7 patrol. So one of the things we could do, and I would recommend that we do do, is follow-up, staff follow-up with trying to get more current numbers regarding that. Then, go ahead, next one. Another potential to consider is assessor's pilot program to reduce the assessment cycle. The assessor has one key service level that we could take a look at, and that's his reassessment cycle, which currently, Jim, around 16 years? And the state recommends six or seven?
It used to be a state mandated six-year reassessment cycle.
Okay.
That mandated was no longer there. Probably like to adapt to six to eight years.
Right. So that would be, and the assessor is currently pursuing a, a program, a pilot program to consider doing a more frequent assessment cycle. And that program would be, potentially be funded by State of Oregon along with the cities and the taxing districts, as well as us putting in some money into that. The estimated fee for us, a hundred and twenty-five thousand roughly?
Total cost of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, about 10,000.
Okay, so only each a 10,000 part of ours.
Jim, could you come up to the microphone?
Oh, yeah, Jim needs to come up.
Hear that, because that's kind of important stuff.
Yeah, this is good stuff. Thank you, assessor.
Yeah, we're talking total cost of the potential pilot program. You might recall last year at the, at the budget session, I brought you some information that showed because we were out of cycle, we were missing a lot of property values out there. I put that, that same program together, if you will, and we've been talking to AOC, LLC, Small Districts Association, School Boards Association, and they're generally willing to assist to get Curry County up to a level with this pilot pro, program. A hundred and twenty-five thousand would hire and equip one and a half extra employees in the assessor's office. And I think over, over five, six-year period, we could get our reappraisal cycle down to six to eight years.
So when you say a hundred and twenty-five thousand, you're talking total from everybody or just from the county?
Total from everybody.
Okay, so.
The split on that is, is based on the total amount of taxes that each district gets out of the tax pie that we have for Curry County.
So the schools would be paying the majority of that?
It would actually be the state paying for the schools, about 60% of the total cost.
Okay, I just have one question on that because I approached our superintendent with this same thing, and this is Brookings Superintendent of Schools, and he said, if they were to get more tax money, what happens is the state gives them less because each school district has a certain amount that they get per student. And so if they get more tax dollars from the county, it's really not to their advantage to put out, to get more tax dollars because the state puts in anyway.
Generally that.
Which is why what they're looking at is having the state kick in the contribution for the schools because the biggest benefactor then, because of what you just said, is the state.
Right, it would be to the state's advantage to do this, not the school districts.
That's correct.
Okay. I just thought I'd bring that out because I was concerned about it, and when that was explained, it's kind of like, why should the schools even bother? Because it's not going to be to their benefit.
It will be to the state's benefit, though. You understand that.
Yeah, I understand that part, definitely.
And our benefit. The assessor's office did a preliminary kind of dry run on this with the city of Gold Beach, Gold Beach local option and the Gold Beach Urban Renewal all told together. And they raised with reassessments and Assessor Colan has a lot of pictures of places that were discovered and, or yet to be actually put on the rolls, places that either expanded or built totally without a building permit and so on. So any rate, the amount raised was almost $6,000 for the city of Gold Beach and a cost of, is that correct? Or am I reading this wrong? I'll let you read it.
Okay, so we've been reappraising the city of Gold Beach over the last couple of years, and what we found was, we found about 2.2 million in unpermitted property values. And which, which would raise for just the, the district that is the city of Gold Beach, approximately $6,000 in, in additional property taxes. If this pilot project moves forward with the state's contribution at 60%, the city of Gold Beach's cost for that would be about $3,000. So, so basically, we've already found twice.
Well, and that's just for one year. What happens is they're going to get those taxes.
That's correct.
I would say in perpetuity, but not necessarily.
This pilot project would be looking for a continuous contribution from the cities and other districts as well as the state.
And the state's all for this?
This went before the legislative session, the short session, and we were just begun work on this in, say, November, and it took some time. And so it didn't get to the legislative session in a timely fashion. They haven't done that, but there are people that are looking for, to take this forward to the E-Board this year and still get a $75,000 contribution towards this from the E-Board. That means something to people that go to the legislature. I'm not really sure what the E-Board is.
Emergency Board.
Okay. But they're looking to get that contribution for this next year for some, for 18, 19.
So question, how do other counties compare to us as far as their assessment cycle?
There are several counties around the state that have 20-year reappraisal cycles. One that I would give you an example of, Deschutes County, says he's on a 20-year reappraisal cycle. However, they have a very good code enforcement officer that, that are actually finding the places that are being built without building permits, and so they're not getting behind on those. Because that's their discovery, their code enforcement officer is finding those places, notifying the assessor, and, and they're getting those taken care of.
Well, and let's hope that we can do the same with getting a code enforcement officer, not just going out and checking on raw sewage, et cetera.
And it really, it goes back to what I told you at the budget process last year. Our discovery process is either the building permit process or the reappraisal cycle. We don't have a code enforcement officer that's informing us of anything, so.
Would you like one?
You know, I think if you get a code enforcement officer, they're going to have their hands full just catching up to all those, those properties we've already found that were built without building permits. So I would be surprised to see them get ahead of us.
Well, if they were built without building permits, you've got the permit funds that are going to come in, plus you're going to have the assessments change, I would assume.
Permit funds don't do anything for the assessor's office.
No, they don't, but, but the, the assessment, assessed value, I would assume would go up if they had.
Yeah, once we, once we go there and do the reappraisals on those properties, yes.
Right, right.
And like you said, once we get that on the roll, it stays on a roll, normally increases by 3% per year and in perpetuity, that word that you didn't want to use, I think you said.
Well, some people end up trashing their places.
Yeah, it's true, too.
So I can't say that totally.
So anyway, these figures were just for the city of Gold Beach.
Okay.
And I would say that we've not completed the city of Gold Beach. We've done about 80% of the residential properties in the city of Gold Beach. We have not done any commercial or industrial or utility properties.
Well, you know, if the state's willing to pay, what was it, 70%?
60.
60? Then I think it's a no-brainer, let's go for it.
And our estimates are that, I mean, I told you that the return so far for the city of Gold Beach is about two to one, but I would estimate that the returns countywide for the districts would be closer, anywhere from three to five to one.
Okay. So let's get on her.
All right, thank you, Jim. Go ahead, yeah. So in the county clerk's office, another issue to consider is the need for a new voter tally system. Obviously, we have two elections, at least two elections for this year. The current software that they use is no longer being supported on, it's on a Windows 7 platform versus a Windows 10 platform. So the clerk is looking at a new voter tally system, an approximate cost, fairly substantial. If we were to pay it all upfront, 50 to 60,000, although she doesn't have a final bid on that yet, she's expecting it any day. However, it could be financed over a period of at least five years, you know, at a roughly, rough cost of eight and maybe at most $12,000 a year, including interest.
Could that save us in time for people having to tally them by hand?
Yes, yes, it's a big saver in time. It would, I'm not sure if we could necessarily equate it to direct staffing reductions, but we certainly could equate it to a reduction in bad, bad counts or challenge counts. This is a system that tracks every single ballot that's submitted, kind of categorizes it, kind of presents it back to the election officials in a condensed, easy to, easy to see and understand form, particularly relating to undercounts, overcounts, damaged ballots, et cetera. So that really enhances and speeds that process, and our understanding is, makes that process as well more accurate.
So does Renee Colan have to hire extra people at each election to do the counting or?
We typically bring on a part-time help to help with the counting, so it probably would reduce some of that and maybe virtually all of it, I'm not sure about that, but would certainly assist with hiring part-time help during the actual election, you know.
Okay, I'm just thinking in terms of how to pay for this.
Absolutely. Go ahead, John. For your benefit changes, obviously, this is always a difficult area. You saw, at least in comparing, particularly the deputy district attorney, and I know he's, the district attorney's reported to me, you saw how much out of whack his salaries were with our comparable counties, as well as our two neighboring counties. I know he's very challenged to recruit for positions. He. He lost one of his key deputy district attorneys just a week or two ago, and he's having difficulty finding applicants, qualified applicants. I think in no small measure, I'm not saying exclusively, but in no small measure, that's probably due to it's substantially below average pay scale. And I know the sheriff reports similar problems. He hires deputies, he gets them certified, he gets them trained, and then, as often as not, they go away to another county that simply offers more pay and benefits. So one of the things that needs to be looked at, I understand the year-to-year budgetary crunch, if you will, particularly general fund budget crunch, the tendency is to, you know, well, we just can't afford any raises this year. And I understand the truth of that statement, but as that statement keeps being repeated year after year after year, you gradually run into a situation where we are no longer competitive in hiring. But we want to keep our wages, you know, at a reasonable level. We also want wages and benefits that will allow us to attract qualified people. So I'm not saying we're not, I'm not saying we're there yet in the sense of not being able to attract qualified people, but I am saying we are in the area where we're, you know, under pressure with that problem. Go ahead, John. Five-year technology update plan. I understand this was presented from Kus Curry Electric, Curry County, Oregon, Information Technology Five-Year Plan. And I'm not knowledgeable enough about what's in this plan to say this is a good plan or not so good plan, but I do know that we have to be budgeting and providing for enhancements, improvements, replacements of computers and other support equipment, as well as software. So what I would like to see happen is we put in our budget every year, enough money, if not to implement this plan, at least something that will get us down the road.
Commissioner Huxley?
I would hope that we'd hear some comments from county council on that because he was involved with the IT department before you started.
Right.
And there was quite a detailed plan.
Right, and I assume this is what I was given as the plan. Go ahead, John.
Sure, this was actually examined in pretty good detail by our budget department, I think, at the last budget round. And I know I was involved in the creation of it, I think, you know, I don't want to put her on the spot, but Louise knows a lot about this. And then I think what happened is, I mean, just a summary, is that Dan Springer came and presented this, and it was a fairly, you know, ambitious or robust or complete plan. And then the budget committee basically said, we can't afford it, and they basically cut, you know, in other words, if he said, we want to replace eleven terminals a year, they said, we'll do five or something. I mean, Louise, I'm paraphrasing there. Do you have any independent recollection of how that went? And I know we have a, Commissioner Huxley, you were on the budget committee, but to think that I have any insight into this document beyond John hit or Louise here, the real person with the insight is, I think, Dan Springer, so.
I believe what we did was, when we went through the, this is a five-year plan, but there was also another document that had a five-year budget, budgetary plan. This doesn't seem to be in here.
Yeah, it wasn't given that.
Yeah, so what we did was, we did the absolutely minimum we had to do to keep that five-year plan for next year's, this current year's plan. And so we did not budget to replace any equipment. It was replacing the software that had to be done and finishing the stuff that had to be done about the.
We're talking about the firewall and the, okay, got it, all right, sure.
So they went through that, and they said, this is essential, and that's the things the budget committee kept.
Okay.
And the ones that weren't essential, like replacing individual desktop computers and updating that stuff was not kept.
So again, Commissioner Huxley, if you had other follow-up for me, I'll try, but I just don't want to have anyone think that I've got really a ton of insight on this.
Commissioner Huxley?
Well, my point was, I was involved with you also in those discussions.
Sure.
And part of them also, Louise Colstrom was, and there was significant thought and detail that went into that. And it was, you know, for the, really the first time, we had a five-year plan. Yeah, you can make decisions when you look at it, and you, we did, but even on the firewall and some of the backup systems, we're talking, that were done, were many tens of thousands of dollars in that, so, and following that recommendation. So I just don't want people to think that, you know, even though there was, but we rarely didn't follow it because we didn't, because we didn't have the money. That's absolutely not the case.
No, we did what we had to, we looked at what was the most important to get done at that time, and so we kept those in the budget to continue to get those updated first, and then, of course, we will be looking at another five-year plan again as we budget for IT this time, also to see where we are, what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for that clarification, Louise, and Commissioner Huxley, appreciate that. So I guess part of the question would be, do we want to plan budgetarily for just the absolute minimum necessary? One of the issues too that came up, and unfortunately, we got a pretty good grade, CIS, our insurance provider, liability insurance provider, does occasionally, I'm not sure how often, but come down and audit our technology, particularly as far as malware and other threats and firewall issues. And I know, while they gave us a good grade, there was one in particular, and I don't recall exactly what it was, but one particular pretty expensive piece of software they strongly recommended. But just as an example of what needs to be done there, maybe wise, maybe wise, to do more than just the absolute bare bones minimum, at least plan to do that on an every-year basis. Go ahead, John. Long-term capital improvement plan. Basically, that is a protracted process. I do have here a three-year facilities plan, which I would call really more a maintenance plan from Mr. Hanson. I don't know if, I'm not aware, I've not seen any other documentation on file. What I would like to propose to you, and again, this would be, probably take at least a year to put together, is a long-term capital improvement plan, which usually go out twenty years, you know, planning for what do we need to do, do we need to replace? Well, for example, I know one of the things the sheriff is concerned about is a major jail update and overhaul, obviously very expensive project. So we need, for example, to plan for improvements, upgrades, enlargements, what do we need to, for the old courthouse? Do we need to think about this building? Do we need to think about replacing the roof at some point, five years from now, ten years from now? Do we need to consider perhaps include in there maybe construction of a new park somewhere? These are all parts of the components that make up a long-term capital facilities plan. Obviously, that takes a lot of discussion amongst the elected officials, such as yourselves, as well as usually a consulting civil engineer, who then can sit down and plan out what your priorities might be, recommendations, first of all, of what he sees or she sees as the needs, the compelling needs, and then whatever else the county commissioners may decide should be considered in addition to the compelling needs, for example, to replace a potentially failing roof in five years. But in addition to that, then, develop a plan of how you would implement this capital facilities plan, what would you do in year one, what would you do year five, year thirteen, and so on, out twenty years? Now, this is something that requires an update preferably every year, but probably certainly at least every other year. But would include setting money aside in the budget every year to implement, because if you have a capital facilities plan, and so you know how much you're planning on spending every year to implement the plan, if you've approved the plan, and you say, this is what we want to do, then you've also approved setting aside the necessary funding each year to implement the plan. Now, obviously, there may be situations come up in the course of that twenty-year plan, sooner or later, where you can't go ahead and do the plan that year because of other urgent needs or revenues came in substantially lower than expected, whatever it may be. Yes, I'm sure.
Should we also be considering having some sort of a depreciation on?
Yes, yes, that's part of the plan, absolutely, yes.
Okay, good.
Yep. Go ahead, John. Service levels and service priorities. So I gave you some examples when talking about particularly the sheriff's office, so, but we could do that across the board for all departments. How do we measure up? What minimum level of service do you as commissioners want to establish? For example, what kind of, what's kind of your pain of threshold or your goal for an index crime rate, for example? How, what goal would you like to set for the turnaround? Taking a department I haven't discussed today, planning in community development. What should be a reasonable service level or preferred service level for turnaround of residential building plans that are turned in? So I know Carolyn Johnson has told me right now we're doing that about two weeks. Is, are you satisfied with that? I know there are places that do it in two days or less. I know there are places that take two months or more. So all of those are part of the discussions that we would have to take a look at. In addition, as we look at the general fund, which obviously is the one under most stress, who gets more of that general fund? Who gets less of that general fund if it can't meet the need, which it doesn't right now, and why? Why should one department get more? Why should one department get less? Now, I know the quick and simple answer is, well, we need to cut to people that are in the general fund by ten percent in order to match, balance the budget. And that's certainly, you know, that's certainly doable, that certainly can be done, but, and it's a simple way that does have that, and it kind of shares the pain, but I guess it begs the question, should we really share the pain? Are there certain functions, activities, departments that maybe even should get a increase while we see other departments take a decrease? All questions that are not, none of those are easy to answer, but I think questions, and again, we can't answer these questions all by June thirtieth, I'm not implying that, but over the course of the next year, maybe two years, that we could be working on those.
Maybe that's a good reason for zero-based budgeting.
Well, that's another way of addressing it, absolutely, good point. Go ahead, John. So another option is major service, kind of the opposite of setting or increasing service levels and establishing service priorities, or related establishing priorities, would be perhaps major service reductions or eliminations. Now, I'm going to give you a couple of examples, and again, I remind you, and I said at the beginning, these are not recommendations. And I don't mean to say that these are viable ways to go. I'm just saying this could be something that would be put on the plate. Rather than giving everybody a five or ten percent reduction across the board, you might want to consider shutting down certain activities or functions, or at least reducing them to the absolute bare bones minimum that may be required by state law or just by your own judgment. For example, if we were to close down juvenile parole and probation, except for the state required mandated minimum, we'd save about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We could tell the assessor, well, you got a sixteen-year cycle, other counties are at twenty, let it slide to twenty, no problem, maybe even let it go to twenty-five. Another way would be to tell all employees, with the exception of the sheriff's department, we're putting you on a thirty-two-hour work week, we're only going to be open those day, for four days a week, and nobody works barring exceptional circumstances, nobody works for eight hours a week, and again, other than the sheriff's department. And a few pretty drastic step, absolutely, but you would save about a million dollars roughly in pay and benefits. So again, none of these are easily resolved, all of these take a lot of thought, a lot of consideration, a lot of research before decisions are made. But I'm here primarily just, again, to start the process of thinking, food for thought, and you guys not obviously today, but deciding which one of these pathways, if any, do you really want to explore? Go ahead, John. Or we can explore other funding sources. We've all heard and been around on the ballot many times now, and I understand, in the past, the taxer says, no tax. Do we not increase taxes? You've seen, we're the lowest property tax county in the state by a substantial margin. We were slightly above, minimally slightly above Josephine County, but last fall, they passed a jail levy, and they renewed a dog control levy, so they're now at a dollar seven per thousand, while we're still at sixty. And pretty much everybody, other with the exception of Kus County, which is right about the same amount as Josephine, pretty much they go up very rapidly after that. So that's a question, do we want to consider sponsoring at some point another local tax option? Another option that I saw, and again, I didn't really drill down into this, but most of the comparable counties I looked at operated a justice court. And I know why they're doing that, because they're all reaping more money, more revenues, fine and assess, and other revenues, related revenues via the justice court route, and they're getting through the circuit court. We could adopt a much more aggressive grant writing policy, grant, pursuing grants more aggressively, maybe hire or contract with skilled government grant writers, they're out there, and we could be looking, we, I know our entire staff looks aggressively for staff, for grants, but I am also confident that if we were to contract with somebody that spends their entire day, every day, doing nothing but researching and writing grants, we could probably find some more and/or gain grants that maybe we're not, we're not winning out on today. Of course, that has its own downside, because grants, you know, there's a lot of accounting, accountability, there's a lot of hoops you typically, we as a staff, use, the county commissioners would have to jump through, and usually those grants come with a lot of strings attached, so there's a bit of a downside there. Another option would be steep fee increases. So we could look more aggressively and across the board at what fees we charge and develop an aggressive fee increase raising schedule over the course of the next, you know, two years, three years, five years, however much we want to go out. We could take on some debt, and I suggested taking on perhaps, and again, not my recommendation, but an option, for example, for the clerk's new vote count computer software, rather than trying to fund it cash out of the general fund, borrow, the contractor has a funding agency they work with, and so we could take on some debt there. There, we could issue some revenue bonds or general obligation bonds. Again, I'm not making any of those recommendations, but that is an option we could do. Another option, another thing that we could take a look at is combining organizations. We have a lot of different organizations, for example, we have four different police departments in Curry County, relatively small county, population twenty-three, a little bit spread out, I understand that, but it might be a lot more efficient for us to contemplate and work with the three other cities to perhaps a joint police force. I'll give you one very successful example that I already touched on, and that is, I realize you're very much as far as the two areas, apples and oranges, in the extreme comparison, but Los Angeles County Sheriff accesses the police force for many, many of the smaller, by smaller LA county standards, smaller than probably seventy-five thousand or so cities in Los Angeles County. Very effectively, very efficiently, the sheriff is able to, that sheriff is able to provide a level of training for his, and equipping his deputies in excess of what typically a local police department could do. Now, again, that's a very long-term solution, and we need a lot of people sitting at the table, a lot of people nodding their heads yes, and I'd never get there, but that is something that could be looked at over a period of time. And so, a lot of things to think about here. Again, I didn't, I don't give this presentation with making any particular recommendations. I will follow up with the questions you've asked regarding more detailed information, and if you and if you have either more questions now or later, I'll be happy to follow up with those as well. I do, however, want to address, and have Louise Colstrom address, one of the things I provided you was this spreadsheet, 28-19, general fund. And, give me, get a drink. This is, this is very preliminary, and again, we don't wanna, probably not prepared to dwell on the details. I will tell you, it does include enough additional deputies for the sheriff to do 24/7 patrol. It does not include the money that the assessor would like for, to do his pilot program. It doesn't include the money for the clerk's new computer software system, vote counting system, and it does include a few other things that are footnoted here, but I'll let Louise Colstrom address those.
Okay, so, on this, the first box, it says 18-19, total revenue, payroll expenditures, materials and services, other total expenditures, and then it has the two from, from the general fund.
For the screen.
Those are projections right now for what we're, is in the, for the 18-19 budget. The revenues are basically the same as the year before, except for, I did update a few things in non-departmental, in that I projected carryover, and it certainly isn't going to be what we budgeted for last year, so our budget for carryover for next year is going to have to be a lot lower, and then...
Would you repeat that? I, I'm not sure I'm making my notes to exactly what you said. Could you start when you were commenting about the, what was actual anticipated or projected revenue? And maybe also, if we could get it up on the screen as county councils...
I'm waiting for it to put it up on the screen.
Suggesting?
Look at that. So, first, let's, let's try to get it so we could just see that first box better.
Yeah, the electronic version, put that in. From the flash drive? I assume there is. Oh, yeah, I'm sure there's a...
You had it, just turn...
Oh, I'm looking at the screen, it's up there?
Just turn the light on.
Do we have one of those laser printers so you could maybe point where everything is?
It doesn't work on the screen.
Oh, does it?
It doesn't, it doesn't, you don't see it. I brought one in, it doesn't work.
Oh. She's even with my new eye, I can't see all of it.
You get the full packet electronically, you just pull the full packet up and put that electronic document, yeah. I'm looking at, at, no, 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 but I'm, but it's on, it's in the packet.
Yeah, it was part of the general, was it? This, I think I was saying it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's part of it.
It is, and it'd be a lot clearer than that.
I don't know if you guys want to do that? I don't, I don't know where it is. Is it on this laptop here?
Yeah, you mean, you access the, the county website and pull it right up through the meeting agenda packet on Meeting in Minutes.
Okay.
Just scroll to that page.
I don't know how to get this back, JJ, to where it was.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it should be on the board meeting for 3/28/18, as far as the packet.
Works out.
Well, it's just, it would be referred, referred to as a full packet.
I pushed some buttons, I'm sorry. My fingerprints are all over that thing, yeah.
I don't like that mouse.
I don't either, that's why I'm gonna do it.
I'd like you to have that, JJ.
Oh, glad.
There we go.
There you go, thank you.
Maybe JJ can just point with the little mouse where you are?
Well, let's go to that first column in, in the first box that says total revenue. So, those revenues are basically the 17-18 revenues with a couple of exceptions, one of which is noted on number four, footload below, and the number nine footnote below. So, the number four footnote is that next year, things could change with this new bill that was just signed, although I'm not sure what, what it actually says, but it was rewritten for Title III to allow more expenditures of Title III, but I think it's still going to be restricted to, to search and rescue type things, and this project of the GIS operations, which, that, if you go back up, so you could see number four, GIS, GIS operations, has some Title III revenue into it, and that has been used up and will no longer be available from the old projects for the Title III projects. I think even with the rewrite of Title III, I haven't seen it yet, I know Sheriff knows, but we, I'm expecting it to allow more expenditures in the search and rescue type operations, rather than any of these old projects that we were using Title III money for that are running out. And on number nine, I did change in that number from last year's budget. I budgeted $2,008,000, carryover, where this year, I think it was $3,007, something six, I can't remember. But anyway, it's a lower number, and so that's been adjusted, but I think all the other revenues that are up there, basically the revenues that I budgeted the year before, unless I knew something different. So, veteran services, they already did a, a, a budget for this year, a supplemental budget, because last year, they got a lot more during this year than we budgeted for last year, so that's been recognized in this document here, and recognized solid waste, I believe, has increase in, in fees, so that, that revenue is gonna go up for next year. So, in the ones that I could figure, and you could look and see in that first column in that box, to the first column in this box right here. Yes, it's a jerky mouse, that's why I don't like it. See, so that, in the 17-8, can you, JJ?
Yes.
I need one of those pointer things.
Apparently, it doesn't work on there, from what I hear.
So, the, the 1,000 and 1,000 is the same rev, the 27-09, 27-09 is the same revenue. I haven't handed these, these are just based off of the first budget discussions with department heads that we have every year, we just kind of go through their budget, where are you this year? What are you projecting for the end of this year? Is there anything you know about next year that I, that you can tell me right now, before we actually, on April 6th, hand these budget worksheets out to them, to do their final proposed budgets? So, both, mainly, these are the same as the year before on the total revenue projections, unless I knew something different, and then, and then I did put those in. On the payroll expenditures, there's notes down below on all of those that are in yellow, and of course, the payroll projections for next year include already negotiated payroll increases or payroll benefit increases. So, then the materials and services are the same as they were in this year's budget, except for the one for the sheriff, because it includes vehicles and equipment for the four additional officers that Mr. Hett mentioned when he just introduced this. And then the only other increase that I have is, is footnote number eight on the $25,000 of purchasing a vehicle for, I believe that's emergency services? You have to go back over that way, so I can see what it is, emergency services. So, the payroll ones, the footnotes is, last year when we did the budget, we cut out an unfield position in elections, and Renee, when we talked, asked me to put that back in, it's going to be essential, essential for her department to have that other person, especially when she is having the high turnover she is having in her department. And number two, and I have to look up above, which is county clerk recording the difference, and, and just, if you look way over to the right, let's go way over to the right here, JJ, all the way, these over/under, that, these little notes are kind of explaining why those are over/under more than the two from before. So, it's, it's a kind of, that over/under is, sorry. So, like, the first one, which is Bob, to, this year's two from, general fund is $5,222, bringing out, taking out of the general fund, and last year it was $4,144, the difference is $1,078, and that has to do probably with the payroll changes that were already negotiated. Unless it has a note on it, it's basically that kind of difference, because everything else has kind of stayed the same. So, in the note for the second one, which I, I, is clerk elections, that difference of $53,000 is adding that position, and the other changes in payroll besides. So, the number three footnote includes juvenile, there was a larger percentage, actually, we did that, we're, we're looking at that for this year, a larger percentage of payroll coming out of parks and into juvenile because of different duties that people are doing in juvenile parks under director trust, so we try to square that up with what's actually happening as compared to how, how things were last year when we did this budget for this year. So, there's a little bit of change in, in that one. Number four is that revenue, Title III transfer that may be out of funds. Number five is payroll adjustment over this year. It's adding in, there's number five, community development planning, it's adding the senior planner code enforcement officer position that wasn't there in the year before, and that also adds in, in non-departmental, too, because the nuisance part is in that. And number six is, in last year's budget, county council had, out of, out of, what do they call that? Out of class stipend that he's had, and it was included in last year's budget under the solid waste portion that gets costed for his salary, and so now he's back to his regular pay, and so it reduced the amount in solid waste under payroll. And then, number seven is, there were several out of class positions in the Sheriff's Department that he squared up into this budget. It didn't add an awful lot to the payroll costs, what's really adding is adding those four deputies and their vehicle and supplies. Number eight is the emergency services, is including in their budget next year, capital outlay for a vehicle purchase, although it may be a supplemental budget this year, and if that's the case, we'll take it back out of next year. And then, number 10 is bringing the surveyor up to 18 hours per week, and adjusting to his agreed-on rehire hourly rate. And number 11 is adding a part-time deputy treasurer, and I don't really have a lot to say about that, I think that was, it was like a .25. I believe that in discussions with Mr. Hett, our treasurer has a job that cannot be just passed on to anybody, it's a conflict of interest for anybody in my department to do those things, and she cannot leave because she doesn't have anybody that can come in and do portions of her job while she's gone, so she can't take any vacations, she can't be sick, because a lot of her job is a daily work that has to be done, and, and so if she, if she leaves, there's nobody to do those things. So, that's, it's almost what she was budgeting for as a, in her, in her service by just hiring somebody from another department, but it's proving to be kind of a problem about getting somebody from another department that is trained to do the things that she needs to be done. So, the solution is, instead of hiring somebody from another department whenever she needs to leave, is to actually have somebody that's trained specifically in that position so that they can take over for things what she has to do if she's gone. I think that's what we were shooting for on that.
Right, and it would also be an employee shared with another department.
It would be just...
Wouldn't be 25%. It wouldn't be a 25% employee just on the treasurer, it'd be a one-quarter employee, treasurer, trained, and, but working most days in another department, probably support for county commissioners' office administration.
So, that's, those are, this is where I am right now on the proposed budget. It's basically a status quo, except for those footnotes below, and it also, it does include in the status quo, increases in the payroll from last year's payroll negotiations. So, right now, I'm sitting at not balancing the general fund balance by $1,069,332.
So, does that include SRS funds? It doesn't, does it? It doesn't, does it?
It doesn't because I have not got a quote of how much the county's got. I'm hearing that we can be getting some kind of communication from Rocky McVeigh within this next week that will actually break down what to expect county by county. When they say 2015, it's hard to look at our books and say, this is the number. The number that was receded into 2015 for SRS and 2016 for SRS are very different numbers. And I'm believing that the 2015 funding that they're talking about was actually received in 2016. So it's, I would rather hear from Rocky what, when, when he says 95% of 2015, he's going to break that out by county and give us a number. And I would rather use that in my budgeting than trying to guess what number to use.
Oh, that makes sense.
So that's, that's why it doesn't include that yet.
Because that could paint a pretty significant picture.
I don't think it's going to paint a significant picture in the general fund because most of that SRS money is road fund money. And it would help the road fund, but I don't believe there's going to have a huge impact, and I'm talking huge impact on.
Commissioner Hesse.
I, well, I have to wait and see, but that's not what it was the last time. It was, the road fund was significant also, but, but both were very significant on that last time around on it. When I say significant.
When I look at the history.
One plus million for each, each year for each of the, and the road fund, well, I think was, came in at like a couple million or something.
When I look at the history, I'm not seeing in those two years a significant amount of money. So I, I just don't know. I don't want to say anything until I get the amount from Mr. McVeigh, really.
Counsel Huddle.
Well, I heard a word or a phrase that got my attention. It talked about a conflict of interest. And I think it said, he said there's a conflict of interest between the treasurer and the accountant.
Because a lot of the things that she does is tasks that involve bank accounts, which also involve signers of bank accounts that are in my office. And so that if you have somebody who does something that's a signer on a bank account, that does something in the banking, it is something that we do not want to do unless we absolutely have to. It's a small office and sometimes you have to do things that are not really protocol for separation of duties. But this is one that I think that we can avoid and, and I would prefer to avoid it rather than having one of my staff step in and do things that their signers on the accounts, they have more access than they, than Debbie does to do certain things. And she has more access to do certain things than my person does. So that gives that person a lot of access.
Too much, huh?
Too much, in my opinion, yes. It's more a separation of duties than it is a conflict of interest. But yeah, it's just trying to keep that separation of duties so that our risk factor is as low as possible in a small office.
Are there any other questions? No? Okay, good job, thank you.
That concludes our presentation, Madam Chair, Commissioners, even ahead of time, unless you have any other questions or you'd like to bring up at this time, or suggestions, recommendations for myself or our staff at this time.
Any suggestions, comments? Okay, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.